Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Rhythm Select Board Meeting. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Vice Chair Chris Gallo. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I'm now going to confirm board member access. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Selectman Jim Anderson.
Present.
Selectman Bill Harrington.
Present.
Selectwoman Michelle Rouse.
Present.
And Chris Gallo, I'm here. Staff, when I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Do we have Assistant Town Manager Administrator Greg Enos?
Yeah.
Amanda Vazapolo, Executive Assistant.
Present.
And I see other members. I believe we have members of the Planning Board, Chairman McKnight, the Subcommittee, potentially our Town Planner, when we get to that. So we do have an action-packed meeting here. I do have to take care of some old business that I'm going to move very quickly through. As I do want to be able to spend the appropriate amount of time on the joint meeting with the Planning Board Subcommittee. So if that's okay, I'm going to go to tab number one, and I'm going to ask our clerk, Selectman Harrington, to read the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Announcements for nine seventeen twenty-four Select Board Meeting. Public health nurses are offering flu shot appointments on Monday and Tuesday. Registration information may be found on the website. The DPW will be conducting cold in-place paving on Vine Street, Everett Street, and Hancock Street on September nineteenth and September eighteenth and nineteenth, respectively. Roads may be temporarily closed during work. The DPW will begin flushing water mains and hydrants for five weeks, starting September fifteenth through October seventeenth. See the website for complete details and tentative schedule. Now accepting nominations for the Seventeenth Annual Youth and Adult Volunteer of the Year. If you know someone who goes above and beyond for our community, fill out a nomination form by October second. The new website, new subscription service, visit www.renthem.gov. Go to notify me. Create an account by selecting notify me sign in. Then select agendas, alerts, calendars, jobs, or newsflash to get email or text messages, notifications for those items. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. Appreciate that. Now we're going to go to tab two, approval of the minutes. At this time, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve the September third, two thousand twenty-four open session meeting minutes.
Done.
I have a move. I have a motion made by Selectman Harrington, second by Selectwoman Rouse. We'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Selectwoman Rouse.
Yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you for doing that. We're going to go to the next tab, which is old business, and it looks like we have interview. We're going to start with the, we're going to start with the review of the conditions for Seamus from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. That dog hearing, I just want to make sure I have everyone here who's on the meeting. We should have in our packets, we had a report from the Animal Control Officer Lexi Clank. If she's on here, we're going to meet her shortly. Letter from Attorney Keith Langer. Letter from Amanda Davis. And then with us tonight, we do have Animal Control Officer Lexi Clank. Lexi, you here?
Yes, I am.
Very nice to meet you. Welcome to our meeting.
You too. Thank you.
We have Attorney Steve Chaplin, me, from Me, Tollerman, and Costa, our Town Council.
Good evening. Always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, sir. And then we have Sharon and Jim Costa, the owners of Seamus. And Attorney Keith Langer, they're, as their attorney, obviously.
Yeah, just so you know, our name is Koda.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize. Let me, so I apologize. We have Sharon and Jim Koda. She, and it's Sheamus, right? Is the dog?
Yeah.
Right, at least. Attorney Langer, good to see you.
And you also, Mr. Sherman, members of the board. I know you have a very busy evening, and I hope I can expedite this in any way that will help you.
Thank you. We're going to help. We're going to let you do just that. And then we also have Amanda and Ian Davis here with us.
Present.
Okay, thank you for coming. At this time, if it's okay with you, Attorney Chaplin, I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over to you and have you kind of give us a summary and where we're at at this point.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Gallo. Last time we were here, there was a request that was made on behalf of the, of the owner of the, of the dog. This was the subject of this hearing, I believe it was last year in late two thousand twenty-three, if memory serves. The, the request, one of, one of the conditions of this board's order was that Seamus be muzzled. And so this time around, we've had a request from the dog's owner through legal counsel to relax the muzzle restriction, or I should say to eliminate the muzzle condition. So that Seamus would no longer need to be muzzled. One of the other conditions was that Seamus would be walked alone, not with other dogs. That, that condition is not being requested to be lifted. That, that would continue. So the last time that we held a hearing, the board wanted to hear from the town's Animal Control Officer, understandably so. The Animal Control Officer being a subject matter expert. So to paraphrase and take some poetic license, essentially, we've had some turnover in Rhythm at the Animal Control Officer position. So I don't believe the new Animal Control Officer, at that time, had had a full and fair opportunity to investigate and report to the board. So sort of in a exercise of wisdom, the board decided to continue the matter, permit the Animal Control Officer to conduct that investigation, to meet with the dog, observe the dog firsthand, and report back to the board. And before the board this evening, there is an item of correspondence from the town's new Animal Control Officer. I won't read it to the board, but just summarizing it at a high level. There was an observation made on August twenty-ninth by the Animal Control Officer, observing the dog, observing the dog's demeanor, and making a recommendation to the board. From a legal standpoint, this really is a policy question. There's, there's no statute that requires the board to lift the muzzle restriction. There are, you know, no cases or administrative regulations handcuffing the board. This is in the, in the discretion of the board based upon factors that the board reasonably deems necessary and appropriate. So really, myself and the Animal Control Officer, we, we serve at the pleasure of the board to make sure that the board feels it's made a reasoned and fair decision based upon the evidences before it.
Thank you, Attorney Chaplin. At this time, I'm going to ask Animal Control Officer Lexi Clank, do you mind just giving us a high-level summary of your interaction and your recommendations? Because this board is, as Attorney Chaplin has indicated, this board is very much in favor of letting the policy experts do their job and us just, you know, being support as needed. So Lexi, do you mind giving us a quick high-level summary of your interaction with the animal and what your recommendations are?
Yeah, so on August twenty-ninth, I did go over to six twelve West Street to meet with Sharon and Jim and meet Seamus, and I actually had quite a good interaction with him. We took things slow. I do have experience as a dog trainer before this job. So I know to, you know, take things slow, and we did a calm introduction. I went inside of their home. I met Seamus, won him over with some treats, and everything went well. He did not act aggressive whatsoever towards me, but I totally understand both sides of this situation. And I don't think that, based on my meeting with Seamus, that he's an immediate threat. I think it's situational. And the situation that he was in, it just unfortunately happened where he did bite. So it's, you know, I can say that I felt comfortable around Seamus, but I don't know how he would, you know, interact with that neighbor if they were to come in contact again.
Okay. Thank you for that summary. At this time, Attorney Langer, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I do. And I thank ACO Link for taking the time to meet with the Cotas and the Seamus and to give the board her report, which, as you heard, finds him not to be a danger. And I remind the board of Patrick Moore's testimony at the original hearing where Seamus wandered into a pool party at his property. Strange people running around, loud, exciting. It's a pool party. Did Seamus exhibit any aggression whatsoever? None. Patrick Moore testified that Seamus was perfectly calm and proposed no danger, was not excited, didn't bother anybody. Note that we are not requesting lifting of any restrictions other than the muzzle. Seamus will still continue to be walked alone on the special harness by Ms. Koda, who usually does it very, very early in the morning because she has to go to work. She makes a point of checking the yard to make sure neither of the Davises are out. She goes out of her way to make sure that they are not present when Seamus is walked. As far as keeping the muzzle, it serves no purpose. There is no threat because Seamus is not aggressive to anybody else. It's only one person he's had an incident with, and the Cotas make great efforts to avoid her at great length. I would point out it takes more time to put the muzzle on and off than it takes to walk past the Davis's property on the sidewalk. We believe that this condition is unnecessary and can quite reasonably be lifted in the board's discretion with no menace to anybody or anything. That is our position, and we're happy to take any questions from the board on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Langer. Before we do that, I'm going to have, I'm going to ask the Davises if they have anything further to add before I open it up to the board members.
Yeah, just let me, I don't know if I can figure out video. One moment here.
We can, we can see you.
Okay. Um, I would just like to state, for the record, Patrick Moore is Sharon Moore's brother, so that's like his second home. She swims him there every day during the summer, so he's very comfortable there. If you remove the muzzle from this dog, you are putting me and my family's safety at risk. For what reason, I don't really know, except the dog is not muzzled to walk by my house. We live on a busy road. There's no other way for her to walk her dog to her family that lives all around us than past our home. I beg the board to please consider our safety, my safety, my children's safety, my husband's safety, all of our safety. I understand the dog may be, may be great with other people, but there's been three incidents against my family, and I think that's enough to keep the muzzle on.
If I might respond, Mr. Sherman?
Sorry about that. I said, thank you, Mrs. Davis. I appreciate your input. At this time, I'm going to open the, the floor to the board members. I'm going to start with Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So my question is for ACO Clank. So Lexi, is there any harm to the dog by them being walked with the muzzle?
If it's a proper muzzle that is fitted correctly, then there's no harm to wearing the muzzle, no.
Okay, so, so take into consideration, you know, there were three events against the Davis family. Do you think it would be appropriate if we maintained having the muzzle on when they walked by the Davis home? Then maybe remove the muzzle and then put it back on, on the way back?
I, you know, I don't see anything wrong with that, as long as Seamus is being controlled alone, no other dogs, and the owner is in full control of him at all times, just having him on a leash, following the leash law, things like that. And then, of course, if they're going to be in close proximity to the Davises, it might be a good idea just for everyone to have him muzzled when walking by the home. But again, meeting him, you know, in the home, I didn't notice anything aggressive, but again, I can't speak for when I'm not around, so.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectman Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one question. In the letter from Lexi dated to us, it said the idea of having Seamus re-meet the Davises was talked about to see how she reacts with them, but decided by the Cotas they did not want Seamus to interact with the Davises. Is, is it, can someone explain what, you know, if the dog has no, you know, fear or interaction, you know, why wouldn't they want to try and reintroduce it to see if it's, you know, can, can we all get along type situation? Can someone answer that? Maybe Lexi?
Um, yeah, so I mean, just in my experience with dog training, some dogs just don't like certain people based on previous experiences, so you never know how that could go. I can't say that Seamus would be fine with the Davises or not. Again, I think it's more situational, so it'd be hard to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. No more, no more questions.
Okay, Selectwoman Rouse.
Thank you. Select Board Member Harrington asked my question, so I'm all set at this time.
Okay, so at this time, I'm select, I'm ready to have someone make a motion here. I think we've listened to everyone involved. I think Selectman Anderson might have had a good idea. But Select, do you want to make a motion, Selectman Anderson?
Yes, I'll make a motion to maintain the previous condition with the exception of they can remove the muzzle on the Davis property, and they must put the muzzle back on when they're passing on the way back again.
So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm hearing that correctly, Selectman Anderson, you're making a motion that the muzzle order be lifted except when walking by the Davis's property?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
I'm sorry, I should ask, any further discussion from the board members before we go to a vote? Seeing none, Selectman Anderson?
Yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you all very much. I hope this is, you know, as best of a win-win situation for all as possible. We understand both sides of the situation, and, you know, I just hope that we can all move on without issue. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you so much. We're going to move right on. At this time, I'm going to go stay with old business, and we have an interview appointment of Kathleen Bellici for the Cultural Council. And let me just get to that in my packet. Do we have Kathleen Bellici with us, or do we have someone from the Cultural Council with us?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe that she is on. She did confirm that she had availability, but didn't accept the invite, so I'm not sure. We may just want to move on from this and put it on a future agenda.
Sounds good. That's what we're going to do. We're going to move on. We'll table that for now. We're going to go down to new business. First item on the new business is a, is tab five, which is a special one-day license application for Shovel Town Brewery at the White Barn Farm. With us, we should have Frank Altieri and/or Chris Cantleer of White Barn Farm. Who do we have?
I'm here, and also my event coordinator, who runs all my events now. Also here, her name is Katie, so Frank is not here. He's at Pearl Jam.
Lucky him. So with that being said, Chris, can, can you or Katie give us a quick summary of this event? We, we've done a bunch of these, but this one looks slightly different because if I'm reading the packet correctly, you're doing the stage and the entertainment across from the farm stand. So it looks like parking is going to be where the farm stand is, but the actual event is going to be across the street in the field?
Yep. Yeah, so we've, we actually do this style festival once a year. And this, I think, was, we, this definitely was approved last year. Just so you guys know, we went through this with a different brewery, though. And so the way this festival is set up, because it's a little bit bigger of an event, it's a ticketed event as well. We have local musicians that play. We want to open up the other side of the farm to people sort of once a year, so at four fifty-eight South Street, that's where the Beer Garden will be. And then that's also where the musical stage is, as well as some of our local vendors that will be selling their local products. And then for us to park cars efficiently, we park them at the farm stand side, and then we do apply for the police detail the whole time. And the police detail helps people get across the road, both to and from their car. Our farm stand is open and operating that day as well, so it's a longer event. And just so you're aware, it usually, the cars sort of come throughout the day, and then people stay for a couple hours and leave. So typically, this event hasn't been as, like, busy in the sense that you have a, like, a two-hour window where everyone comes. It's usually kind of a slow roll of an event to happen, so that's what we've done in the past. We did this last year, and so we're replicating that.
And just to confirm, Chris, this is for this Sunday, the twenty-second?
This is for this Saturday, the twenty-first, with a rain date on the twenty-second.
All right, so the, the motion I have is wrong, so we're going to have to change that, Kevin. I have September twenty-second with a rain date on the twenty-third. So we'll just edit that. No problem on our.
Yeah, sorry. We're trying our hardest to get ahead of these things. We thought we got ahead of them. I think we get, on our end, we get messed up with the summer schedule, and then we sort of forget about it.
You guys had it right. It's just wrong in my pack. Saturday with a rain date, a Sunday. Do we have anyone from the town here, Kevin, that wants to add input, or can I just open it up to the board members?
Um, this is Frank Altieri from Shovel Town Brewery. I'm sorry. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to get in. I had some technology problems. But anyways, I thought it might be a good opportunity for us to introduce ourselves to the board. You know, we run a brewery in Easton. We also dispel spirits, and we have wine. And we run Easton Shovel Town Brewery, as well as Station One in Foxborough. Both are well-received in the community, and we always like to be a part of the community. We're involved. So this gives us an opportunity to help out, you know, to come to Rhythm and work with the farmers to help sell their wares and also to, to create a sense of community in the community. We've done this in Easton. I don't know if you guys have heard about the Langwater Farm events. They grew from a handful of people till he sells a thousand pizzas. So there's a tremendous opportunity for the farms to make some money, as well as the breweries, which, you know, we're, we're struggling out of craft, but we love it. And I take any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, I have nothing more to add, other than the application does say what the motion is written as. So if you look at page twenty, the applicant put a date event of nine twenty-two with a rain date of nine twenty-three. So if we can just confirm, it looks to me like the twenty-first is the Saturday, so the motion reflects the way the application is written as, as submitted.
All right, I saw it another place that it was correct in the application.
Yeah, the description.
Yeah, okay, so I, okay, we'll just confirm. When we do the motion, it's the Saturday, the twenty-first, with a rain date of Sunday, the twenty-second. And thank you, Mr. Altieri, for that. I grew up in Easton. I know Langwater Farm. I've been to Langwater Farm. I know your brewery in Easton over by Doug King's building there. So it's, it's great to have you in Rhythm and looking forward to a nice event with White Barn. At this time, I'm going to open up to the board members to see if there's any other discussion needed. We're going to start with Selectman Anderson.
No further questions. All my questions were answered in the packet.
Okay, Selectman Harrington.
No question, Mr. Chair. They're answered in the packet, as long as the Inspeccional Services, Police and Fire are on board with them. Good. Thank you.
Okay, Selectwoman Ralph.
Just one question. Chris, do you know you have the rest of your fall events that you can, you know, give us again? I know that we want to, like, so we can do this at one shot for you. I know I sound like a broken record each time you come up.
No, I understand.
Just to save, save everyone's time.
Yeah, so I do, we're looking to do them Saturday. Basically, we're, we want to, we want to do Saturdays, every Saturday in October, from twelve to five o'clock.
So if you're going to come to us with, I would suggest, like, just put all those together, right, Kevin, on an application, so we can do it all at once? And no further questions, since we've, we've reviewed this prior and everything looked in line.
Yeah, so the next one would be the first?
No, no, because we don't have another meeting in September. We can't approve something that hasn't been presented to us for October fifth.
Yeah, so that's what we're, that's what we keep running into.
Well, that's why we keep mentioning it every time we talk to you, get your act together and present it, so you don't have these mishaps.
I know. Sorry.
No worries.
Can I, can I make a comment, a quick comment?
Sure, hey, just, just to remind everyone.
Yeah, just a quick one. All I wanted to say is.
No, Mr. Altieri, wait. This is my, this is our meeting. We're going to ask everyone to go through the Vice Chair just to keep order, so I appreciate that. So at this time, Mr. Altieri, please go ahead, say what you'd like to say.
I was just going to say, that would work if we can come up with a way to just, the dates, the key dates change all the time. So if we could say, okay, we want to do an Oktoberfest, we're going to do five events in October, and then we come back to you and tell you what the dates are. That would be helpful to us, because we're, we're working on crop rotation. When the pumpkins are ready, you know, it changes all the time. It's very difficult to plan exactly. And then if there's a rain day, it hurts us too, so. We could do, we could, we could come early, but we would need flexibility.
Mr. Altieri, what I would suggest to you is, we have a wonderful staff, Amanda Vazapola, our Executive Assistant, Kevin Sweet, our Town Manager. Work with them, present the dates that you have, and then they'll tell you everything you need to do to get them all done in advance. Then we come to a meeting like this, and we approve them all at once, like Selectwoman Ralph and Selectman Harrington are recommending. The most efficient way for all of us.
Yes, I totally agree.
Yep, go ahead, Chris.
I, so I think, is it, just, this is just a question. Is it possible for, I think what I, I think what we struggle with is picking the dates, and then we're trying to find the breweries to fill those dates? Is it possible for White Barn Farm to come to you guys at one of these meetings and say, White Barn Farm wants to apply for these dates throughout, and then we can select our breweries within that? Would that help? Because sometimes it's hard. We're waiting for breweries to say, oh, yeah, I can pick that Saturday. And then I, does that make sense what I'm trying to say? I think, I think I can totally get ahead of it, but I wonder if White Barn Farm can apply for it, and then we can select the breweries that can come, because sometimes we know, like, a week before.
Kevin's Town Manager, Kevin Sweet, I'm going to let you answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would, I would suggest we take this offline. It's not before discussion tonight, because this is the only one on the agenda. But we can, Chris, we can meet and kind of come up with a game plan. The issue is when you're giving it a one day, and the board is the approving authority, as the local licensing authority, they need to approve a date. So the issue, if you have a blanket open month, you may be missing, which is the case now for this first one in October. You may be missed, running into a case where the board is not available, so we'll have to discuss offline a policy on how we can get that to work out. But for tonight, we can only approve what's before them tonight.
Just know that this board, this board has been very supportive of you, White Barn Farm, Chris, so.
I know. I appreciate it.
Whatever weekend to work with you. So at this time, I do need to move on, so I'm going to ask for a motion, Vice Chair, to entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
So, so these one-day special local license, aren't we only allowing five per year?
No.
We're not?
Well.
Twelve a year? Okay, very good. Thank you.
I mean, one of the things we could discuss is the possibility of getting a, you know, a bare line on an annual basis to avoid these, but that's a different conversation. But yeah, so Selectman Anderson, there, more, it's no more than twelve per calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board members before I make the motion? Uh, being none. Uh, at this time, the Vice Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve or deny the special one-day license application for Shovel Town Brewery. For the Harvest Moonshine Event at White Barn Farm, four thirty-one dash four fifty-eight South Street on September twenty-first. Which is Saturday, twenty twenty-four, the rain date of Sunday, September twenty-third, uh, second, sorry, September twenty-second. Twenty twenty-four between the hours of twelve and nine PM and to authorize use of electronic signatures. I had a motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Ross, yes.
Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Uh, congratulations and we'll, we'll talk to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a nice night. Next item on the agenda, again, we're trying to go quickly here, uh. Tab, sa- tab six, vote to sign his, uh, vote, discussion on vote on change to the senior workoff program. With us, we should have, um, Rob Scotten, our principal assessor. Rob, are you here?
I am, thank you.
Rob, welcome. Can you give us just a, a quick summary of what we're trying to do and I'll get the boards, uh, to, the board to weigh in on it.
So the Board of Assessors and I are recommending that we increase the hourly rate for the senior. Workoff volunteer program to fifteen dollars an hour. It's currently at ten dollars an hour. And to increase the overall, um. Earn credit to fifteen hundred dollars. So we'll keep the hours the same at a hundred hours.
Okay, um, uh, Kevin, anything to add before I open it up to the board?
No, just making sure, uh, the board's aware of, um, Finance Director Mike King's comments. That's the only other thing that's in the packet.
Yep. And did everyone see, uh, Mike King's packets, board members? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
At this time, I'm gonna open, open it up to select board members, starting with, uh, Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. So I've, I've got no further questions.
Okay, great. Selectman Harrington?
I think it's a great idea. No questions.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Agree, no questions. Great idea.
I love the idea as well. Uh, Rob, I did catch you at the nine eleven, uh, uh, remembrance. Uh, and I was approached actually, uh, by a couple of residents at, uh, Rentham Day. Who informed me that other communities, the, uh, the amount is actually higher. Uh, it's two thousand or up to twenty-five hundred. So I did have a conversation with Rob to, to potentially talk to Mike King and Kevin. Uh, and I'm not suggesting this for right now, but I think we should, you know, look and see what the other communities are doing and see if we're in line. Or need to make any changes.
Um. If you like, I do have a list of communities and I know their hourly rates and exemptions.
Just the ones that are closest to us. Are we, are we in line, Rob?
This will put us in line with Foxborough, Norfolk, Bellingham, Franklin, Mansfield and Walpole.
Beautiful. Sounds good to me. Alright, so, great job as always. Thanks so much, Rob and Mike and everyone else on the team. And at this time, the Vice Chair will entertain a motion to increase the senior workoff abatement amount from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred a year. For a hundred volunteer hours for, of service and to set the hourly rate at fifteen dollars an hour pursuant to general law. Check, Mass General Law fifty-nine, section five K for calendar year twenty twenty-five. Um. Why is it saying or? Kevin?
I think there was, there was two motions proposed. I don't know, Rob, if you proposed that or not. Um, essentially with a cap, it's just tying it as opposed to an hourly rate to the state minimum wage.
Okay.
But we're gonna be there anyway, fifteen dollar per hour mark. If that's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors. Um, I would recommend that motion. Uh, Rob, is that what the board is recommending?
Yes, it is. That would, me and Mike did have a conversation about tying it to the hourly rate. And there is a way to do that, or the hourly rate to the state minimum wage, I'm sorry. But we'd have to decrease the hours.
Yeah, I would go with the first motion that you just made, um, Mister Gallo.
Alright, that's what we'll do then. I'm gonna reread it so there's no confusion. Vice Chair to entertain a motion to increase the senior workoff abatement amount. From a thousand to fifteen hundred a year for a hundred volunteer hours of service and to set the hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour pursuant to general law fifty-nine. Section five K for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
I had a motion made by Selectman Harrington, second by Selectman Anderson. Any further discussion? Being done with the roll call vote, Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Ross, yes.
Now, Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Great job. Okay, um, last one really quickly. We're gonna do, uh, the, the signs here. Um. This is tab seven, I believe. Yes, uh, vote on sign installation request, King Philip Regional Boosters. We have an email in our packet from David Gresham. Uh, from the Sports Boosted Chair. We have photos of the high school championship sign and donated, uh. KT Regional High School Championship Signs. And with us, I believe, we have David Gresham, if I'm saying that correctly. Chair of the King Philip Sports Boosters. David, you with us?
Mister Chair, I don't see, I, I didn't provide it in, um, proposal and I think, uh. You know, at this point, it's at the discretion of the board and we'd assign that to the director of the Public Works. I need to only to find, you know, my recommendation, location that makes the most sense. We do have other signs around town. This isn't unique to Rentham. There are other communities that have similar, um, and if you, if you sign install, we can work in. What the best location unless the board has a strong desire for a location or against a location.
I, I mean, Kevin, my immediate feedback is, you know, this is awesome. I'm so proud of our kids. Uh, I know we all are, but sign pollution comes to mind. So I just wanna, I wanna take discretion and use discretion. Uh, you know, because it asks us like, it leaves the number of signs blank, you know, like is it, are they proposing one sign, three signs, five signs? Uh, I mean, I, obviously, I think the board trusts you and Brian to make the necessary decision, but, um. I, I would just please use discretion.
Yeah, I think the discretion would be really where the, where the board, uh, the prior board back, I think, twenty seventeen had approved. Uh, would be kind of the similar same locations, uh, which are generally entry points that are coming into town, getting off the exits, uh, four ninety-five, um. You know, as well as town line at, um, on one forty and Franklin as well as, uh, Foxborough. So. We wouldn't start putting up new sign locations throughout the whole town. It's, it's really this, those visibility entryways into the community. Uh, so, you know, the, uh, Purple Heart and things like that as well.
Uh, I'm gonna ask the board members quickly. Selectman Anderson, does that sound good to you?
Sounds great to me.
Selectman Harrington?
Absolutely, yes, Mister Chair.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Just one clarification. Are we adding this sign to the current one that is presently installed? So this will be just an additional sign with, for the football team?
I don't, I think they were looking, they, they gave some examples of that. Um, I don't know if they're looking to amend the sign that's there to include it. Or have a dedicated one just for the football team. I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, but it could go on the same.
Okay, yeah, I think it makes sense to go with all of that, right? When they're all listed, the championships, instead of just having one separate for the football team. Because then, if it happens for another team, then we're gonna have all these separate signs. So that's just.
Agreed.
Just an observation I'm making and looking at the ones that are currently installed and then the sign donated from the booster. So. Just something to be aware of when we're taking a look at this.
I think that's a great point and with that, I think the board's very comfortable having you and, uh, Brian Antonoli handle this. Do we need to do a formal motion or can we just?
I would just, uh, do it just like you stated to approve the installation of signs, uh, as determined by, uh, town administration.
Okay, at this time, Vice Chair would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the installation of. King Philip Regional Schools State Championship Signs at the discretion of town administration.
So moved.
I had a, a motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being done with the roll call vote, Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Ross, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Okay, um, at this time, um, I'd like to welcome Chairman Mike McKnight. Uh, of the Planning Board. Do we have to formally open a meeting here, Kevin?
Uh, the Planning Board, uh, does, Mister Chair. Uh, we're all set. I would turn it over to Chairman McKnight to, he can, uh, roll call his, uh, members. And then we can jump right in.
And I'd ask for a motion to open our joint meeting of the Planning Board Subcommittee with the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight for the MBTA overlay district. And we have a motion, either Mister Lawrence or Mister, um.
So moved.
Thank you.
Woodhams.
You have a motion? Yeah, no, I got it. I finally got it. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second discussion. A roll call vote, Mister Woodhams?
Aye.
Mister Lawrence?
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye. Uh, three in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, Gallo.
Yeah, Mister, Mister Chairman, I just wanna say, uh, I know you and your committee and the whole planning board have been working tirelessly. Uh, as has our board, uh, on this MBTA communities, uh, legislation. Uh, you and I have had plenty of conversations offline. Uh, as you're very well aware, uh, I've tried to, you know, uh, uh, communicate, uh, the concerns and the points of this board and our constituents in town. Um, in my conversations with you, I'm just, I'm just saying this so that my board can hear, uh, an update. Um, I've had plenty of conversations with Chairman McKnight. Um, he knows our concerns. He knows our constituents' concerns. Um, and he knows that we've had a multi-pronged strategy of trying to work with the, the state on any kind of relief, which didn't get us anywhere. Um, you know, then we charge the planning board in this committee who's done a fantastic job of identifying parcels. That are gonna be presented tonight, uh, to us tonight, that'll have the least negative impact on our community. Um, and the third prong of our strategy is to obviously watch very closely the legal challenges on the enforceability and constitutionality. Of this law. Um, with that being said, I just wanna again thank Chairman McKnight. Who's worked tirelessly with the Subcommittee and the full planning board, um, on this MBTA communities, uh, uh, legislation. And what they're presenting to us tonight. And at that, at this time, Mister Chair, I pass the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo. Um, Amanda, I don't know if you've got a couple of versions of this PowerPoint. I don't know which one would show better, but I think if. If we could bring that up, um, I think it'd be helpful to have people see the deck if that's possible. Fantastic. Great, thank you very much. Well, uh, appreciate the, uh, the offer here and glad that we are here to, uh. To give you an update on where we are. As, as Vice Chair Gallo said, we've, we've had a lot of communication, a lot of back and forth. Um. Have we gotten this perfect? Probably not. Have we come a long way since the last time we spoke? Absolutely. Um, it's, I think what we've learned, uh, going through this process is, this is. There are multiple answers here potentially, but I think what we've done as a, as a Subcommittee and then brought that back to the Planning Board. Has helped us define, uh, the guardrails in which we're trying to operate and get to a decision on. Where is, where are the best sites and or where are the least impact, uh, for the town? So, um, I would ask. Mister Woodhams and Mister Lawrence to step in if, uh, if there's a point they'd like to make anytime through this presentation. Uh, but why don't we skip through to the next page? Um, site selection process, proposed locations and next steps is what we're gonna talk about tonight. On the next page, uh, is just a list of all the meetings that we've had. Um, including, uh, the Subcommittee meetings and then, uh, I would call this a, uh. A pivotal moment, uh, when we had, uh, the meeting with EOHLC. And we were able to answer some questions or ask many questions and got some answers that helped guide us in terms of how we. Were going to present, uh, various sites. Uh, probably the biggest, uh, is that we're not, we are still in compliance. We are in compliance as long as we get to. Uh, a submission, uh, by the end of the year. And, uh, I think probably the biggest thing is we could carve out portions of parcels. Uh, which really helped us to define, you know, in a more refined manner, not just locations in town, but actual parcels where we could put this. Um. And so over, over many, many meetings and, and many conversations, um, you know, I think we've gotten to a point where we've, we've honed in on some things. Uh, some particular sites and excluded others for various reasons. Um. One of the things on the next page is the start of, you stepped, took a step back and said, okay, what are our guiding principles? We understand what the intended law is. We understand what the guidelines are of MBTA communities. But what is it that we as a town, we as a planning board and we looking out for the town's best interest want to, should consider as we're looking at these sites? Um, and these are, these are the things that we came up with. So continued educating ourselves on the law, the guidelines. The risks of doing nothing pending lawsuits in other towns and having other towns. Uh, and what have other towns done to solve this? And we've got a lot of information on that in, in particular. Um. Find a site that has the least impact on various things, whether it's town character, uh, the town center. Congested roads and traffic, water, town services, police, fire, ambulance and school. So we took all of that into consideration as we were putting the filters on this. To look at various sites. Work to find sites that generally comply with the law and guidelines to the extent possible. And we say that because. I don't think it's possible actually to, to build a particular site unless you're. An MBTA community with a downtown that you put the overlay on and it's within the designated distance from the MBTA. To meet all of the guidelines that they put forward. So we said, how can we, how can we look at this and say, we're not, we probably aren't going to meet all of them? What are the most important ones to meet? The other is to include affordability of ten percent so we don't lose traction on our, on our forty B. Um, include, uh, things like the master plan and open space recreation documents that are in the town. That the townspeople have looked at and voted on. So how do we incorporate to make sure we're not out of line with the things that we've already put into place? Um, and then strategy on, on, um. Where we select sites. And why we select sites so that they're not necessarily easy to develop all at one time. So how do, how do we place these sites where over. A, and I'd say a longer period of time, the town can absorb them. So how do you, how do you look at sites that? You know, some, maybe some, maybe a few of them can be done sooner, but others are much later in, in. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty years out potentially. Um, so those are the first set of guidelines. The second page is a continuation of that. Uh, look at sites that are hard to build out and would offer, um. Benefit to the town. So thinking about sites that need to clean up, um, junkyards and other sites, underutilized sites. Sites in town that, how, if we did develop them as MBTA community sites. How then could we get a benefit and get, get projects put on sites where they get either cleaned up or they're. They're maximizing their utilization where today they're not. Consider implications on tax revenue. We had a lot of conversations about this and there are a number of sites on the, on the chart we're gonna see next. That are commercial zones. And as we looked at those and had multiple conversations about that, we tried to stay away from that because of the tax implications. If we put this residential development over a commercial zone, the tax implication could be dramatic. Um, we could be offsetting a residential tax for a commercial tax and not getting what's best for the town from that perspective. Um, locating in different parts of town. So a key strategy that we really started to develop on was. How do we spread this out? Let's not have seven hundred and fifty units sitting in one location in any part of the town. How do we break that apart and say? What is it that would make sense from a distrib- distribution perspective within the town? And a lot of that came down to the next one, which is access to public, uh, to, um, public transportation. Um, access to the Ts. And one of the things in the MBTA communities is, how close can you build these to existing T stations? Now, we don't have one, but other, other towns do. So Franklin, uh, Foxborough. Um, all have, both have T stations. And so, as does Norfolk. And so we considered it as a kind of a driver. How do we, how do we, if it fits correctly, how do we build these sites? Into areas where they're closest to T stations? That also actually puts them on roads that can handle traffic. Because if you, if you look at this. Fifteen units per acre adds up pretty quick to put some pretty sizable developments. On the minimum. A lot size of, uh, fifteen units an acre on twenty-five acres. We have to have one parcel that's twenty-five. That's three hundred and, uh, seventy-five units. So where do we put these that the traffic can actually handle it? So we started to look at the road networks of one forty Route One, uh, North and four ninety-five. Um, we tried to stay away from West Rentham and the core town center. Uh, of Rentham. The town center already has a development that's underway or it's coming before the planning board at eight units per acre. Um, but we felt that putting any more than that in the center of town would be, uh, detrimental. Um, bring forward the best, least disruptive plan to the November. Bring forward the best, least disruptive plan to the November town meeting so that we get in front of that, we put in front of the townspeople so they can vote on an option. Is it, is the one we're going to present tonight? The ultimate option? No, I'm sure we'll have a lot of opinions on it, uh, whether it's in this meeting or in. Um, when we present to, um. Folks at, at information meetings or even at the town. And then we learned, uh, through the process that using the town center as a mixed use development. Although there's some benefits to that. It actually doesn't help us, uh, because. When you say eight units per acre in the center of town, we have to make up. And average out to 15 units somewhere else. And the acreage that we use doesn't actually count against the 50 acres. So we, we took town center completely out of play. Those are the guiding principles that we use to filter our discussions and our conversations. On the next page, um, it's just a clip from. Um, adjacent communities, which we are. And, um, and this is the point we said reasonable access. To the transit station, um, that was really, that's what drove me to say, okay, how could we locate these on the? You know, outskirts of town potentially, not in the town center. Where there's traffic networks that can handle it and where they're close to T stations. Uh, they'd like to see it in the center of town and I don't think, uh, you know. At least, at least in our town, that wouldn't, I don't think that would be the best option. Maybe Norfolk, which I think their overlay is in the center of town because they have a T station, have to be within a certain distance. But, but not for Rantham where, where, where we are in adjacent community. Um, on the, uh, next page, this is. This is probably a lot. Uh, this one did not come up well, Amanda, um. On this version of the deck, I apologize. There's. It's missing all of the X outs. Um, maybe I could ask you to switch over to the, oh, never mind, here they come. All right, I guess we're on a, uh. On a deck time delay. Yep, yeah, go back please. Okay, so what you might have seen the first time was, uh, the analysis that was done, uh, by our town planner and some consultants. That essentially, uh, did an analysis of various sites. It came up with. Uh, a site in the town center because we didn't, I think probably because we didn't know enough about how. Um, the mixed use development would play with the credits we were going to get and the advantages we might get by using the town center. We've learned since that that's not the place, uh, to put this. And then one further down Route 1A, um. Uh, that would pick up a fairly sizable overlay district. Uh, one of the concerns that we've talked a lot about and then I've been a proponent of this is to not put it on 1A. Um, to me, Route 1A, I mean, Route 1A coming up into the center of town is, is part of our town character. To see it, and, and it's eclectic, uh, but it's, it's part of, part of kind of what I enjoy when I ride up 1A. To see all the different things that are happening on 1A, whether you have residential, you have some businesses and you have. Older homes and things. So. Um, we took, we took that off, off the, the chart and. For that reason, as well as traffic, um, we felt that putting more traffic on 1A. Uh, coming up into the center of town was not gonna, not gonna be viable. Um, you will see here, uh, some 14, I believe, different. Or 13 different parcels. We could walk through each one of these, um, but what I can tell you is that if it didn't fit the criteria. And many of these are commercials, commercial districts. Um. Some of these, uh, are in West Rantham, some of these are on Route 1A and some of these are. In areas, uh, you'll see number two, we crossed out because of, I believe. Um, the green has an implication around, um. Recreation and school and other things. So. Um, I think. I wouldn't say we exhausted every single parcel in town, but we started to look at this and hone in on areas. And the two areas that. We really started to focus on are three areas. I'll, I'll start there because I think we, we narrowed it down. Uh, is 140 on the Franklin line. You'll see two circles there, number one and number 12. Number one being a commercial district. Um, part of that is built out, uh, part of that is not built out. And number 12 is essentially the land off of, um, Elysium Street that goes out to the sandpit. And then the other, uh, one of the other sites was up off of, um. Route, kind of at the intersection of Route 1 East Street and 140. I think it's on East Street. And that has access to Route 1A, Route 140, and it's very close to the. Uh, Gillette or the Foxborough T Station. The 140 on Franklin Street is very close to a lot of shopping as well as the T Station in Franklin. The other site that was in contention until our last meeting was down on the south of Route 495 on 1A. There's a few parcels down there, um. I believe they are called the Armitage Junkyard. Um, and. At our last meeting, uh, I think that got taken out of play, um. It, it may be still there if we can't find the acreage we need between the. Number 12 site. And the number 13 site. Um, so still to be determined, but, um. The three areas of town, uh, that. Uh, we've been focusing on are those 140 at Franklin. East Street up, uh, by between 140 and 1. And down south of 495. There was a lot of discussion initially, uh, that came up around the outlets and people, um, wanted to take a look at that. The reason we discarded that was we felt that. That would be a high risk, um. Option for us. They, they have the infrastructure. If retail declines, it would be an easy transition from retail. To housing and they've got the infrastructure with sort of treatment plants and, and things like that. To have something go up fairly quickly. And one of the things that we were trying to do is to. To not have that happen as quickly as that. So that is, that is the, that was the reason why we took out the, the outlets. Um, I'll pause here for a second before we go into more depth on 12 and 13. Uh, and see if Mr. Woodhams or Mr. Lawrence wants to add anything to that. That, that's a culmination of four months of multiple meetings. So if I miss something, I'd like them to make sure that we, we, uh, filter that in.
Mr. Chair, a couple of quick, just a couple of quick notes that I wrote down. Um. Just as, as an addition, by eliminating the town center from consideration, that also maintains our. Our special permit authority, which we would lose. If, if, if we did the overlay. So that was another reason for not wanting to, to include that. Um. And the other thing with discounting the outlets. Is because the way that this is. Worded, um, the, the overlay. Requirements or, or guidelines. Is the underlying zoning would dictate the size of the buildings that they'd be able to put in. And because of the zoning of where the outlets are, it would allow for. Uh, structures that are much taller than anywhere else in town because of the particular zoning at the outlets. And be, be able to put in, I believe, what, four stories? Um. Or more if, if, if it were to be done at the outlet. So that was another reason for. For not wanting to put it there because of the intensity that it, it could bring.
Great, thank you, Mr. Woodhams. Um. One of the interesting parcels that we looked at was number nine, which is out at the, uh, I believe that's, uh. The Abbey. There's a lot of land out there and one of the, one of our thoughts was how could we benefit the town if we put something out in West Rantham? Could we get that, the development to? Put up a new water tank and then, you know, help the town from a water perspective, but. I think at the end, we felt that the two acre zoning in West Rantham, uh, was so unique that to put. You know, 350 units on. 25 acres wo- wouldn't fit with the character, uh, in West Rantham. So we. We took that one off the table as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think also the. The reason that we kind of stopped looking at West Rantham more so was, you know, any traffic added to 121 coming into town. Uh, that's already a very difficult situation. Um. And, and so that was, that was also in our things. And I do remember that. Number two, if I believe, if I, uh, know correctly is the state school, then it was ineligible for certain reasons.
Yeah, we, we pushed and I know, uh, Mr. Sweet, you can, you can talk to this. We pushed on whether that was an option. And I know we've tried that a few times in town, but it was not, uh. We clarified that with the state as well. It's not a. Not something that we can go and, and overlay for this.
The other, the other benefit of the parcels that we've chosen is. None of them intersect with our, uh, water protection overlay district. And when you, when you add that into the calculation, it makes a difference because. If you have very much of that at all in the parcel that you choose. The state is going to make you rewrite all those regulations so that, or add some kind of something in there so that. These people are immune from those. Conditions. And it can't trigger your special permit. For them to build it. So there's just, there's just a, a layer of complication that comes on if you. If you, uh, include those districts in what you're doing unless it's just a small sliver of what you've got. And so there were, there were concerns in around that, that I don't think we need to get, go into chapter and verse of. In a busy, uh, you know, BOS meeting, but, um. You know, that also, that also led us to where we ended up.
Good point. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lawrence.
I'm complete.
Okay, um, why don't we dig a little deeper on, on sites 12 and, uh, 13? We spent some time on those as we narrowed the, the pool and the list of sites. I think the next page has. Uh. This is, uh. This is Elysium Street off of 140 near the Franklin Town Line. Um. There is a, a very large parcel which is outlined in blue. We're not recommending all of that. We've bisected it with this yellow line that you see. And we're looking at that, that as a site, um. One of the things that we're in the process of doing is now, uh, having MHPC help us to calculate the usable areas. Because these. This one in particular has some wetlands up in the, I guess we'd be in the northwest corner. Um, there's a net acreage here that, that we can use. We're looking at this as a larger parcel, so 25 acres. As a minimum, maybe up into. Uh, 30, uh, depending on. How much yield we can get out of the other site. Um, and I'll explain that when we get to the other site. Um, but we feel that, number one, this is. Much of the traffic from this, uh, and if we're, we're talking, um, 25. Units, we're talking 375, we're talking 30, we're talking, um. 450 units here. But we felt that much of the traffic, uh. From the folks that would reside here. Would end up coming down to 140 and moving more towards the Franklin side. Uh, there's a couple of supermarkets over there. We've got the T Station. And to kind of take some pressure off of the town, uh, town center. Although if they did turn. Uh, on 140 and come to the center of town, 140 is a road that we felt, uh. Of all the roads in town that could handle, handle the traffic. Um, the other thing is we think that this one would be a longer run in terms of development. Uh, you've got the sand, you got the, the pit that's still active. Um. I think this one, uh, at least from my perspective, and I think I'll, uh. Generally speak for the planning board, felt that this one. Isn't one that would be developed in the near future potentially. Um. So that is, that's kind of how we're carving this out. We think we're going to get, uh, we could get up to 50 acres, but it, we don't. Necessarily think that this is the right place to put all of them. 500 units, 750 units is a lot. Uh, so the number of units here will be determined by. The yield of acreage we can get out of the East Street parcel. And again, I'll, I'll open it up to Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence for any other particulars on this site that we talked about that I haven't mentioned.
No, I, I have nothing else to add. I think that was pretty, pretty much exactly how we were all thinking.
Okay. The second, uh, site, which is on the next page. Is the East Street. So what you see at the top of your page is 140. East Street is the one that comes down across, across the page from the top, from the left to the right. Um. We've carved out in blue this whole parcel, but we're not anticipating, uh, the use of all this. As a matter of fact, much of this site. Is, um, will be excluded based on wetlands, uh, issues. The area is 60 acres, when you take almost half of that off of, off of it. Um, and then contemplate the work around. Offer zones and, um. The other areas in the different colors you see here. It's possible this site, and we don't know it yet. But it will determine how many, how many acres we actually put down at the, or recommend to put down at the. Elysium Street site, um. You know, if this turns out to be 15 acres usable. You know, then we'd put 35 acres over at the other site, um. The, the nice parts about this is its transportation, um. It's got 140, it's got East Street that runs up to 1A. Um, the T Station in Foxborough is relatively close. Um, access to 495 without, you know, necessarily coming through the center of town. So. We felt that from a traffic network, uh, which was a, as we said, was a key filter. This site, uh. At 15, if, if it's 15 acres, um, you know, 10 acres to 15 acres, 10 acres would be 150. Units, um. You know, wouldn't be too bad up in this area. Um, I believe this is one acre zoning where. This, the properties down by the sandpit are two acre zoning. So. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about. The next steps on these, because we have to draft actually bylaws for these, for the overlay districts, um. And for right now, we're starting with the underlying zoning. Uh, as, as. For, for the setbacks and all of the criteria around metrics. So. From that perspective, we think we'll net out of this somewhere in that 10 to 15, uh, acres. If for some reason it's on the lower side and we don't want to put more than 30 acres, uh, we could always open the discussion up again around. 1A south of 495, although we've, we've tabled that for now. Uh, we haven't picked a third site. Um, doesn't quite, the, the third site down south of, uh, on 1A, south of 495. People would have to get on the highway and then drive to T Stations. Um. But, uh, at the, at the last meeting, the board concluded that we should kind of stick with these two based on. They, they fit the filters that we've put on the guiding principles. I'll pause there. We've got more to go through, um, but not on sites. And so I'll, I'll pause there and just see if, uh, if, uh, Vice Chair Gallo, any of the, uh. Board members have any questions or discussions, uh, before we move on.
All right, I'll open it up to the board. Uh, I'm, I'm going to reverse this time. I'm going to start with Selectwoman Rouse.
Chairman Knight, thank you to you and your committee for putting the due diligence into this task. I know it is not easy to. Try to comply with all the restrictions and, and mandates and keeping the character of our town and the infrastructure. Um, and how we can support this growth. So I appreciate all the work that you and your team did. So thank you for that. Um. Regarding the two sites, I'm just kind of curious, when you say, um, like defying near future, do. When you're looking at these sites, are you thinking like three years, five years, 10 years? Or is it hard to say at this point when you say that?
I think it's pretty hard to say, but I, I think anybody coming in to develop a parcel, having to go through the permitting process. Um, it's going to be a two or three year process, I think, usually, um, big sites, traffic mitigation issues. Um, the warehouses on Route 1, which, um, needed a signal has, has been now. At least two years in the, in the permitting process. And I don't know, some of these may require some state permits, which, which will. Which make it longer. I think in general, any site is going to take some time. What we were trying to do though was. Say, how could we push or how could we put a site together that would? Allow something, you know, this site is probably a bit easier based on the timeline than, than the other one because of the, the, uh, the gravel pit. So could we have, as a town, absorb? 150 units at a site like this in the next two or three years, um, as it gets permitted? And then sometime in the future, could we absorb? Um, more, more on a larger site, uh, which would be the other parcel. That was, that was at least my thinking on this is how do you, how do you space it out?
Because we're also have the center of town that's coming into play as well. So we're essentially absorbing three large.
Yeah.
Potential growth for the town. So, um, pretty significant, um. Just clarify for me, so I understand, when you mentioned like the developers potentially help. Just clarify for me, so I understand, when you mention like the developers potentially helping with uh another uh water tank, it was my understanding that we kind of give up all that and we don't get to ask the developers to help with infrastructure and other things that would be associated with these units. Am I incorrect on that?
Um, I guess we'd have to probably seek some legal advice on that. I think linkage is not a thing we can do, but if the development requires water that we don't have. Um, if I believe as part of their development, you know, whether they go out and find grants or, or other infrastructure um mechanisms, they wouldn't be able to build it, build their development unless they had capacity for water. So I think those things do get linked in the development process and the permitting that they physically can't get an approval if they don't have have water. So whether or not, and maybe Mr. Sweet knows more, whether or not we as a town have to put up that water at some point uh and pay for it so that they can then develop their property or whether as part of their development, they have to um, to do that. Um, I know on offsite improvements, many times we require developers to mitigate their um their impacts. And so they would be the ones that would have to go seek either state approval and funding or their own funding to put a signal in, so.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And, and I, Mr. Sweet, how that, how that, whether you have any more input on that, but.
Yeah, no, um, if I could, just Mr. Chair, I think, yeah, that's ac, that's accurate. Uh, the town is not obligated to provide um, those utility services that do not exist. Any developer that um, looks to develop a site uh would have to bear the cost of whatever that is, whether that's pockets or some other funding source, but we're not, we would not be obligated to get those services to there to meet their project. Absolutely. Like you said, all of them require technical reviews and like that to enhance the systems, uh, but it would be on, it would be on any developer.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions at this time. Thank you.
All right. That was what I thought too, but I'm glad you clarified that, Kevin. Uh, we'll go to uh Selectman Harrington at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, uh, to the planning board, you know, uh greatly appreciate all that work that you've put into this. Uh, I mean, I, you know, just a, a quick quick note, uh, a lithium street. It's very, very narrow, very, very windy. Um. I'd be curious to see how you would do a traffic study on that narrow windy little road with a four, potentially four hundred and fifty units. Uh, that'd be one concern. Um. I do see sites four and nine that are, are blocked off. Um, Chestnut and Mount Street, and then the sister and Abbey. Uh, wouldn't they make good sense because they're so close to the Franklin line where Forge Park? And if you came down through Bellingham, they said take the Forge Park and then grocery store access, train access. Uh, and it would limit a lot of traffic to the center of town through one forty. Uh, you'd be bringing the traffic right down into Franklin and uh towards the Bellingham area, um, which would eliminate, you know, congestion that we already have. And then again, uh, that site across uh from the outlets, the armitage and whatnot. That's one exit out from the Franklin exits where you have all your grocery stores. You've got Forge Park on the left. Uh, Franklin Center, or you get down to the right, you've got Foxborough. That to me would make, you know, good sense, especially for traffic mitigate, you know, moving traffic away from uh our already clogged uh streets. But just, just the uh just a couple of thoughts um from what I see from you, from, you know, this initial study.
May uh Vice Chair. Um, so, so the West Rantham sites and I, and I spent, uh, I think I spent two hours on Sunday driving the streets that border the Abbey, all different directions. Um, and I thought there was a T station at the end of one of those. It's not. It's actually, um, I think it's up at the next exit. Um. But I think the, the concern there was that it's not as, as easy, a listening to one forty to Franklin as it is from the Abbey roads. And the, the one that we would come off of is actually the uh, I apologize, I don't know the name, I forget the name of it, but it's on the backside of the Abbey. Um, it would not be on the front side of the Abbey. And so I think what we were concerned with was A being in West Rantham and then B, the traffic isn't as easy to go through the roads and the backroads to Franklin as it might be to get on to West Street and come into town. And West Street is already a, a very busy road. Um. And I'll, and I'll open it up to, to Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence uh for more comments on that. But the other, the other one you mentioned was ten. Um. The the, probably the driver of why we eliminated that and we weren't talking about the, the retail across from the outlets. We were talking about the sites down further.
The one further down.
Yeah. Uh, was because those are commercial sites. And again, it comes down to a tax question. Can we, is the developer going to build and can we get more taxes out of commercial than putting residential down there? Um, but Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Woodhams, uh, maybe you have any other thoughts on those?
Jim, you wanna go?
No, go ahead, Chuck.
Um, just, just in respect to the, the conversation about around the Abbey. Yeah, we, 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 when we had that discussion, my my thought was, well, people couldn't go the other way and come out. They basically come out on King Street, right? Four ninety-five eventually. Um, but it's not a real direct route and the, I think the reason that we really kind of uh stepped away from it was because of our fear that if that becomes a difficult way for people to get through, they're gonna go down Arnold Street, they're gonna go to West Street and they're gonna bottleneck Wampum Corner even, even more. So Wampum Corner is the pinch point for everything coming out of West Rantham. And it's one of the reasons that we decided against the whole one A corridor in the first place is because of the potential impact on that. And I think I think the possibility that people will head towards Franklin is less of a, a carrot than the stick of having them come into Rantham and, and, and further worsening the traffic on West Street. That was my recollection of the conversation we had that night.
So Lawrence?
No, I don't have anything to add to that. I think, you know, what I said earlier and, and what y'all have said pretty well covers it.
All right, uh, moving on, I'll ask uh Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So uh Chairman McKnight, first of all, I, I too want to commend you and your committee for uh doing, doing all the hard work and, and the due diligence on this. Um, I, I, I do have just a quick question though. Um, any consideration at all? For maybe potential development on route one? Or was that all commercial zoned?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. We uh, we talked about route one an awful lot. We talked about it uh in the commercial zones uh down by four ninety-five. We talked about it further up. So that was number eight on our chart. Um, further up on fourteen, there's a couple of small parcels that we might be able to get seven acres out of. Um, but Route one was rezoned not too long ago, you may recall for um I think it's three different zones. There's a north, there's a south, and then there's the uh, the crisp. So much of it falls into the crisp. Um, and one of the, one of the despite those conversations, what we said was part of the living communities of MBTA is that we were concerned that school buses for kids on route one. Um, you know, it's, it's it's, if we thought it would be difficult to with a straight face say to the, you know, and get approved through MBTA that route one is the right place for livable communities. Um. You know, with kids and trying to make it uh feel like it's a it's a development of two hundred units that that is situated correctly. Uh, so that was the other conversation we had about route one. So we we took the three parcels off. Um, there's a lot of commercial there we could develop, but again, it comes back to the highest and best use of, of those properties for tax revenue for the town.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, just while, while we're talking about that, Mr. Chair, I think Chairman McKnight, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I will just, the one caveat to that, if I could play, you know, uh devil's advocate is you're not gonna have a, a bus stop at the end of route one. You would have a development with a street that the bus would go down. And I'm assuming that the, the, the apartment complex would be in that down street and that's where you would stop and you'll let the kids on and off the bus. So although I agree with you, um, you know, just in the back of your mind, I would say just keep that in the back of your mind because I agree with you, getting the state to you know, I mean, listen, and that's a whole nother conversation for another day. Our job is to bring something to town meeting and give it the, the townspeople the opportunity to vote it in or not vote it in, right? I'm not trying to appease the state here. I'm trying to do my, do, do the job that we have to do so that, you know, we're quote unquote in compliance. If the townspeople vote that they want to vote this in, the townspeople are gonna have an opportunity to say, hey, Chairman McKnight and subcommittee, you guys in the planning board, that's amazing, but we're gonna say, we're gonna take the other route. We're gonna go the Milton route and say, we're gonna legal challenge this thing. I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying that is an option and the townspeople are gonna need to know about that. So, uh, you know, you and I have talked about this in the past. I'm not trying to make this easy for anybody.
Right.
Develop seven hundred and fifty units in our town. And I know that, you know, you're not either. Uh, but I just, yeah, the, the route one thing, just to selectman Anderson mentioned it, it was on my mind as well. Not a huge deal. I just figured I'd throw that two cents out there. Um, any other discussion before we let the chairman move forward with his, the presentation? Being none, floor is yours, Mr. McKnight.
I think some of these other ones, I'm gonna bypass some of these because I think they just get into, and if you want to flip uh to slide ten, uh Amanda, if you could. It just talked a bit about, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, before you go, I, I just, to, to record things after hearing the, the select board's input. Um, sorry, I don't want to take up any more time. We have to, but regarding the school buses, yeah, the, the bus, the bus stops would not be on route one, but the buses would still have to be able to turn in and out of route one. And I know from uh having a close personal connection to the people who run the school buses, they do not want buses on route one for any purpose, even if, even if that's not where the stops would be, just, just to pull in and out of a street on route one um in a school bus is, is difficult. So I, I not thinking that the, the stops would be on route one, but even just getting the buses in and out of a side street is, is, is a problem. And as far as the traffic on a lithium street, Mr. uh Chair or select board member Harrington made the point that a lithium street is, is narrow winding. Um, and that's all true. It's possible that if they do a full traffic study, that maybe the requirement, you know, they might find that they in order to be able to build units there, they would have to do some improvements to that road. So it may end up working in the town's favor that we could get some improvements on a lithium street so that it would be able to handle that traffic and that it would be something that uh, you know, a developer might have to foot the bill for in order to be able to build their project.
Yeah, two, two, two good points, Mr. Woodhams. Uh, back to you, Mr. McKnight.
Great, thank you. Um. Slides, I'm gonna bypass slide ten. You can look at it, but I think it's just uh context. Um, it's really not something that the board is focused on right now as we talk about you know, honing in on a few sites that we're, that we're working on to bring to town meeting. The, the next site has some information, our next page has some information and also more contextual. Um. This one is, uh, so we've gone through a schedule of looking at what we have to do next. And so what the planning board's charter is next is to create the bylaws around these. As I said, we're going to start with the underlying zoning and see if the setbacks and buffer zones and criteria work. I think when we get to the larger site, we're going to put more in. I, I would guess I make it akin to what we did in the senior living community where there's going to be a center where we're gonna require meeting, you know, um, open recreation or clubhouse or something in a larger development that might have four hundred units. Um. The developer in the town center is doing that as part of their development. So we can put and craft into our bylaw, you know, many things that would make this um a development that we'd be proud of if it had to go in. Um, and by the way, it probably costs the developers money to do those things as well as the offsite improvements and so, you know, maybe costs uh is one of those things that would drive the project to be further out than um, than in the near term. Um. And so uh I believe this is just saying that we've got some public comment uh period we set up on the planning board meeting. We're going through those draft bylaws. We're gonna meet on those and come up with and socialize um, what we put in. I think making sure we have proper buffer zones to residential developments is gonna be a key, making sure that we have the right amenities defined for a large residential development. If it's over by a lithium street will be part of those bylaws. So certainly any, any input that we can have uh, help on those would be uh, would be welcome. On uh the next page is just the calendar in terms of what we have to accomplish um and the warrants and the timing. And so I think we've uh, we're in queue to meet the timelines that we need to do so that we can have this on the warrant before it closes and have it on the town meeting agenda for the December ninth meeting. Um. We can certainly take comments and, and information and, and adjust if we need to. Um. And then this was just a further schedule. Um. There is some conversation about, and I've heard it from a, a number of different uh ways, should we be going out and putting this uh in more of a public forum for comment and or understanding. So I think in here, um comment period uh closes, but also should we be before um engagement opportunities, Rantham community, Rantham votes, F B, cable eight, anything like that. So we're open to ideas and suggestions. We, there's nothing on the books for us right now. But open to ideas and thoughts of whether this should be socialized before we get to town meeting. Um. And so uh, that's out there for discussion. Uh, we can certainly certainly take whatever input you guys might have on that.
Yeah, I would say, uh, Chairman McKnight, if I may, I mean, I would say, um of course we want to get as much information out to the, the public as, as possible. I think of the vast majority of people, I hate to say this because I think both the planning board meetings and the select board meetings are riveting and everyone in town should tune into them. Every single one of them. The vast majority of people, however, probably haven't tuned into a planning board meeting or a select board meeting unless they have a matter on the agenda. Uh, so I would say, you know, Kevin, with Kevin Sweet's, you know, uh guidance, you know, any information we can put on the town website, um, I think it would be good to get you know, uh, the dialogue going so that when we do have this special town meeting, we're trying not to start from square one uh as much as possible. Um, because there might be something out there that a, a resident has an incredible idea that no one on either of these two boards or subcommittees has thought of, and it could be, you know, a great, you know, uh, uh, you know, something to help mitigate. You know, one thing I do want to say too, uh Chairman McKnight, when I was reading through the presentation that was sent over, you touched on it a minute ago. But those improvements that you said that you can write into the bylaw about, you know, uh, common space, about charging stations, about, you know, energy efficient, you know, anything that we can do to add to, to your point to get a development that we'll all be proud of, that might on, you know, increase the cost of the development to the developer, you know, all those things I think should be very closely looked at. Uh, as, as you've indicated, you will do. And I think this board and the townspeople would greatly appreciate that.
Um, I, I just asked Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Woodhams if we have anything else to add that we haven't covered, um, that would be pertinent.
I have nothing else, Chairman. I, I think we've covered it pretty, pretty completely as far as where we are.
I, I guess in summary, this is a hard thing to swallow no matter what you do. Seven hundred and fifty units uh of an overlay district, no matter where it is for our town is difficult, which is why we put the guiding principles together, which is why we had the filters, which, which was why we're trying to put this in areas where it has least impact and where it might take longer to develop and and, and take some time so we can absorb it as a town as, as things start to work their way through. If, if developers come forward, you know, where would they come first and how long would it take them? I think Chairman Rouse, uh, I mean, uh uh, Selectman Rouse had a, you know, that's a very interesting question about the timelines and we don't know, but I think the, the sand pit, uh, at least my feeling is the sand pit would take a long time to get developed. Uh, and maybe that has to wait until that sand pit shuts down. So, or the gravel pit. So from that perspective, um, as the largest parcel that we've identified. sandpit shuts down. So, or the gravel pit. So from that perspective, um, as the largest parcel that we've identified, you know, maybe we've, maybe we've helped the town from that perspective to, to push this down the road a bit.
All right. Do we have any, uh, any, any other discussion from our board for the what's up committee, Town Manager Kevin Sweet?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just want to, um, expand on the discussion around community engagement. Obviously, we can work, um, internally to work with that. Amanda does a great job with infographics and really, uh, has really done a, a great job with getting as much information either through the um, Rentham News Portal and or, uh, directly on the website. For those that are listening and, um, potentially watching at a later time, um, it's a very easy link to go to rentham.gov under the community tab at the top of the website. There's a dedicated MBTA Communities page. That page actually has a significant amount of information. I don't know that we could actually provide any more information than what's on there. Once you're on that page is another link that says planning process and prior meetings. Every single one of these meetings, um, including the discussion tonight and the discussion tomorrow night at the planning board meeting. We'll have presentation slides. We'll have the insert from, uh, meeting minutes, the recording. Um, and you, that goes all the way back, um, you know, as far back as, uh, a number of months ago. Uh, and there's a significant amount of related documents and public hearing exhibits and you name it. I don't think, um, if you go to that website, there's probably no shortage of information and, and certainly no information that has been discussed, uh, that you cannot find on that. So, um, again, that, the, the rentham.gov town website is the best source, anything and everything, uh, including direct meeting minutes from the planning board, the subcommittee, this, uh, our select board meetings, uh, there's a, a significant amount of information on there. But in addition to that, um, through proactive outreach, through social media as, as this develops, um, you know, we can work with, uh, Amanda and, and the, uh, Planning Director and, and get the right information out and direct folks accordingly. So I just wanted to share that because obviously, um, we all know that community engagement is going to be a, a huge component. Um, our residents need to be educated on this. Everything we can do to get that information out, we'll do. So I just wanted to share that.
Did, um, Mister Lawrence have his hand up? Was that directed towards us? Mister Lawrence, I thought, did you want to say something?
No, I'm sorry. I was asking my wife to wait a moment before she talked to me so I could mute.
I thought, I thought you were flagging me down. I thought, uh, with that being said, do we have any, uh, any more discussion? I'd like to get the planning board off as soon as possible because I know they have a meeting tomorrow night. Uh,
Just a point of order, Vice, Vice Chair, do we need to open up public comment as it's an open meeting or are we, uh?
Uh, I don't think we do. It's a joint meeting. There's no public comment. Uh, Kevin, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's, that's the meeting. So you are in a public hearing. Um, obviously as the planning board, so you are meeting, you'll have to continue that public hearing process, but this is just a joint meeting.
And I would, I would ask the public to reach out to us, um, you know, any questions or concerns or feedback. Um, what's the Kevin, what's the select board, uh, S, what's the select board email address?
As in Select Board Office, SBoffice@rentham.gov. Please, anything, any comments you have, anything to that, we'll make sure, uh, everybody receives that and, and take, uh, take your comments and input seriously. So thank you.
Thank you. At this time, should we let Chairman McKnight close his meeting? Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate, uh, the time tonight. Uh, do we have a motion to close our joint, uh, meeting of the Subcommittee of the Planning Board with the Board of Selectmen for the MBTA Overlay District, uh, zoning?
Done with.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mister Lawrence?
Better be Jim than somebody else.
Yeah, I know. You're on, uh, on seconded, but.
That's why he beat me out. I second.
Second discussion. Vote, vote, Mister Woodhams.
Hi.
Mister Lawrence?
Hi.
Mike McKnight, aye. Three in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We appreciate you. Okay, moving on quickly, uh, to tab number nine, update on the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four fall town meeting warrant. Uh, I believe that's, uh, turn over to Town Manager Sweet.
Yes, Mister Chair, this is just a very early snapshot. Um, nothing too much to discuss. These articles that are presented um, on this draft portion so far, again, very early, um, are just more of our cyclical, um, kind of annual type of things, um, that we, we deal with. Um, you already mentioned in your, uh, announcements, um, Clark mentioned, uh, Select Board Member Harrington mentioned the Volunteer of the Year. Just to reiterate that, that that is open. Um, the other items, the one thing that is a unique one here is, uh, listed as the establishment of the Electric Vehicle Charging Station revolving account. Um, that is something that actually I'm pleased to, uh, actually provide an update on that as it stands now. We, we've been working for a number of months with East Coast Renewable Energy. We have now received back National Grid incentive approvals for all three locations, including um, two heads for, for Phase Three, which are the, the, the best high, uh, high-end vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, they have approved the incentives for the center school lot, um, which would be four spaces, uh, dedicated up at the center school lot. A double, uh, single unit, but double head for a town hall and a single unit double head for the library, uh, location. So kind of strategically around town, um, the way that system works is the, the town will kind of own and operate them. Um, it's very, uh, very intuitive and kind of high level. We're able to actually uh, adjust the rates that are charged for, uh, demand rates. We can look and see what other, other area locations are. Um, these are universal, uh, charging heads. Um, folks will be able to identify and find where these locations are. Um, and we can kind of, you know, that's more than you need to know tonight, but it's certainly, we need, we do not have a, a budgeted mechanism to be able to pay for those uh, meter charges, which the electric usage, but the program by charging, taking in that payment, uh, through the payment system. We will then take that into a revolving account to be able to pay for the expenses related, essentially mostly related to the electric uses, uh, that each of those meters would charge. So, um, the, many communities have done this. The town of Sharon, uh, recently in, in, um, just set up in twenty four at their Springtown meeting. Um, they have a hundred thousand dollar, uh, revolving account that's been set up. They're, they're putting significantly more locations. I think they have thirty location, or thirty, uh, stations around their entire town. Um, so that number as far as the expenditure limit, um, will probably go up to really be able to know when we can make some adjustments in future town meetings. But this is really to establish the account. Um, if all things go well, um, we could potentially have these, uh, live and operational by the first of the year. Um, so that would give us, that would put us in, uh, timing for, through this, uh, town meeting, working through the finance, the ability to collect the revenue and get all that squared away, um, and, and should be a good program. Um, so that's a good thing. Uh, National Grid's process takes about ninety days. Um, they have to physically come out, kind of review the sites and all of that. We move forward with, um, our end piece with the contract, the installs, all of that. So, you know, it, it, it's probably safe to say, um, don't hold me to that, but by the first of the year, we could be live, um, we could go out depending, uh, things that we run into, but that would be the game plan. Um, so that's what that article is. So that's the only one that's really not a, uh, a routine article that, that you would see. Um, just to add to that, uh, we have a meeting scheduled to Finance Committee for October seventh. Um, we've been in touch with, uh, the Finance Committee Chairman. Um, we've been working with them. That's all set. There's not going to be too many finance articles per se. Um, and that will put us in two weeks before the town meeting date of October twenty first and reviewing that with the Finance Committee. Um, so I expect that they would, I would anticipate that they would support, uh, you know, recommend, recommend in favor of that, uh, that article as well as the other ones. Um, unless there's something specific on, on here, um, you know, it would be typical. Um, one thing I was going to add into the Town Manager Report, which is the next agenda item, is, um, the Budget Amendment. And the reason this is on here for a number of months, um, we have been dis, in discussions with, uh, Harvey, um, Waste Management that handles our, uh, solid waste and recycling process. Um, we have not been able to come to a contract number that we had anticipated. Um, the cost of processing and, um, collecting particularly on the, uh, tonnage um, increase, which is something I knew we were going to be facing. I just did not anticipate that they were going to be looking for as much as they are. What the request that they're going to be looking for is, um, not anything more than what other communities are facing. It's going to look like a significant jump, uh, because we've had a, I'll, I'll be honest, we've had a really good favorable contract for the last eight years um, with Harvey. We, we had an initial five-year contract, uh, we did a three-year and we really haven't seen too much, um, too much of a, an increase. Um, it's really been kind of a three percent, uh, kind of annual type of thing and the tonnage, um, rate that we've been paying has been very, very favorable for the town. Um, their proposal now is to bring it in line with what many other communities are, are facing, but it's a big increase for us and not something we budgeted for. Nor something that obviously, uh, you know, we want to, we want to pay. Uh, we have been also working with the Mass DEP, uh, Solid Waste, um, Municipal Coordinator who handles, um, these. One to kind of as a, a check to see if, um, we're in line with what kind of where they're proposing. But also, um, the number, the increase, uh, and I've had a number of pushbacks in a number of meetings. We're now in an extension beyond our contract, which ended June thirtieth. Uh, we now are in the extension through the calendar year in this sort of six-month window to try to get there. I think, um, we're going to have to bring in some other contractors to, uh, you know, just to do our fiscal due diligence. Um, solid waste and recycling is one of those unique things that is exempt under um, mass procurement laws under chapter thirty B. Uh, but I think to be fiscally prudent and to make sure that the town is doing its due diligence, we need to have the discussion with some other vendors. Um, I'm at a position where I cannot just award a contract to Harvey, um, without having those discussions. I feel like the numbers that are coming in, although they're, you know, they're big increases are, um, not anything extreme beyond what we're going to see from other vendor proposals, to be honest with you. But I cannot, uh, face, you know, the, the board and town meeting and say, um, that we've done everything we can. Um, we have with the sense of one vendor and ideally we would stay with vendor. I think when you look at services that are being provided, um, Harvey's done um, a relatively good job. They're here, they're already here from a continuity standpoint. We'd like to continue to work with Harvey. Um, but we need to have those discussions, um, I think in order to get us to a place where I can recommend that this is the best we can do. Um, not ideal, uh, but that's an area we're probably going to be looking at. We had budgeted a five percent increase, um, from FY twenty four and FY twenty five. We've been running for the last eight years about a three and a half, uh, three percent, two and a half, three percent, um, kind of overall increase. The collection piece is, um, pretty easy to predict. It's the disposal cost. Uh, but the cost for processing recycling is not what it was. Years ago, I used to get checks and rebate checks back. Um, and they had what they call a yellow sheet. Uh, we actually used to make money off of recycling. That is not the case anymore. Those days are long gone. Um, and I think the town of Rentham has been fortunate for what we've been paying, um, and it, we're going to have to pay more. Um, I'm just trying to, you know, mitigate that and try to work, uh, a contract that is favorable, um, you know, for the town. Um, so that's probably going to have to be a discussion around potentially some budget amendment. Um, with that being said, the Select Board received our, uh, very favorable, um, certified free cash numbers and retained earnings at our last meeting. Uh, you know, we're in good shape. Um, but again, from a, a fiscally, uh, prudent process, we need to do our due diligence so that we can make sure that we have the best contract for the town. So more to come on that. We're, we've just been trying to have these meetings and um, not much has moved, if you will, on the needle of where they're at. So I think we need, we're now exploring other discussions to try to get a, a, a better number out of them.
Kevin, if you were budgeting five percent and it's not even close, is it, is the, is the, is the increase double digits?
It is. Yeah, as high as thirty in some areas. Um, the tonnage rate is, is a considerable increase.
Wow.
You know, we obviously, we, we know what we're paying annually as far as collection. We could take an average of disposal tonnage, um, you know, every year it's a different number, but it's relatively doesn't change all that month. Some, some months are higher, which is expected and is what we see every year. Um, we typically, you know, Christmas time, December, you know, there, there's a lot more generated sort of waste and you, like, so that is predictable. Uh, but generally year to year, the total tonnage doesn't change. So we have a good estimate of where we know uh, where our total tonnage costs are. But when you're increasing, um, at the, you know, significant double digits per, you know, per ton rate, that, that number goes up pretty sizable. Um, that's, that's really a bigger issue is, um, and there is an increase in the, uh, collection cost as well. Um, so, yeah. It, it is a double-digit number.
Thanks. Okay. Um, what else you got for us before Town Manager Report?
Um, I think that's it on the, on the, uh, warrant articles that you have the schedule on when the warrant, uh, closes. It is open. Um, you know, we've been working, most of what we have, uh, in anticipating are, are pretty much on here. Um, you know, with an addition of, we're still wait, making progress on, on the December ninth meeting, um, which I anticipate, obviously the MBTA Communities, which we've just spent, uh, a long time discussing. And I think we're, we're going to be looking at potentially the land purchase with regards to the sighting of a, a well in, uh, West Rentham. Um, waiting on, should have over the next week or two, some kind of more determining factors related to twenty-four seven pumping that's been happening out there. Um, and it's all looking favorable thus far. So I'll have more up, I'll probably have more for our meeting October where that stands. Um, we're going to have, if we, if this moves forward, we're going to have to engage with a commercial appraiser, um, working with our legal team and kind of get us to a place and then negotiating a purchase price. Um, and then ultimately, obviously, town meeting approval. So there's a lot, there's a lot happening, um, you know, with, with all of that. So that's all I had on the, on the warrant. Um, again, very preliminary at this point, but just to give you a snapshot of where things are looking.
Any board members have any questions for Kevin on the, on the warrant? No, Jim say no, Bill said no. Michelle? No. Okay.
Okay. Jump right in. Uh, I talked about Harvey that was on there, um, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations I had as an update. We got our last approval, uh, today, um, on the library and waiting to get that, um, EDOC to sign, uh, get that going. So that, that's moving along and, and, um, it's taking time, but it is happening. And like I said, hopefully, uh, the first of the year, we can have these locations live and, and, um, you know, be a good asset, uh, for the town. Um, the other update I had, oh, Swick Park, um, good things happening there. We, we've had a couple of, uh, discussions with the contractor. We had a, um, meeting with our engineering team and the, uh, contractor and we're at a position where we feel that the, uh, low bid contractor, which is Argus Construction Corporation out of Bedford. Uh, today I issued them a notice to proceed, uh, as well as a contract. The contract's over three hundred pages. It's a pretty significant document. Um, but we went over, just before I did that, we wanted to make sure that the contractor understood some specifics that were in there. They're on board, um, they're ready to go. Um, they said that they're ramping down another project and they could be, once they have a contract, they could be, uh, out on site within the next probably two weeks. Um, the contract was sent to them and issued to them today as well as a notice to proceed. So I think we could be seeing, um, you know, over the next couple, three weeks, uh, breaking ground over there and, and getting to work, um, which is exciting. Um, the contract stipulates the obligation for the base bid, uh, plus the adult for, um, adult one, which includes the sports, uh, courts, um, which we're able to do under there. Um, one thing to add, I have never worked with, uh, this contractor, Argus, neither has anybody uh, on the team internally, but, um, all of the, we, we contacted a number of, uh, municipal and state, um, reference checks. All were very favorable, um, all had positive things to, uh, with their workings with them. Um, they've, they've seemed thus far to be, uh, you know, very, you know, working with, um, but I have no prior experience with them. Um, they were the low bidder, uh, but they do also have done a number of projects, um, you know, with specialty courts and fields and things like that, um, as well as other walkways and parks and things like that. So, um, I'm excited to work with them. I think, uh, you know, for everything we're hearing and seeing, I think there'll be a, a good contractor to work with. We'll continue to keep VHB, uh, involved in a limited, um, aspect with some construction oversight, which will really be more milestone kind of deliverables to, to verify and sign off on. But, um, it's exciting. I think it's a, a long time anticipated. Um, the fact that we're able to move forward and get the courts done as well, um, is exciting. Um, you know, we had to address the priority issues around safety and access, um, which will all happen, uh, including significant improvements to the walkways and, um, obviously the stairs and handrails and all of that. Um, and then we'll be left, uh, one, once that project completion, we'll be left with, uh, trying to address the lighting, um, which we don't have funds for. The lighting and some additional landscaping that was on the, um, plan, but really the big cost is the lighting cost. Um, and we'll be looking at other avenues to try to get us to that. Well, I will say just on the lighting piece is all of this, um, work and the base bid required the installation of being ready, um, to install lighting. So everything is already, anything under walkways, conduits are there. We're not going to be in a position where we're ripping up things, um, to make it as, you know, as part of the big plan to get us to that lighting and full completion project. All of that has been thought out. Um, so once we, you know, once we get the funds, whatever that might be, um, might be, you know, CPC, might be, uh, you know, a town, might be a grant. Whenever that time comes, we'll be ready to go, um, and, you know, we'll, with very limited impact to the project as a whole. So, um, exciting. Good stuff happening.
Kevin, and just to clarify, great stuff happening. Kevin, and just to clarify, great stuff happening, but just to clarify, uh initially, when we got the initial bids. I remember us having a meeting that they came in exorbitantly higher than we thought. We had to go back and value engineer the project. Take out the lighting as you referred to. So did we rebid the project or is that still the same low bidder from before? But we just value engineered the project, taking out what we needed to.
Uh correct. So the the um the prior one was a full project. Um what we did is we had to go back and pull three components out as adults. We determined what is the bit in the most priority to put in the base bit. Everything we need to do that's priority drainage, walkways, stairways. Safety and access. All of that was in the base bid. We then said, okay, what are the nice to haves? Um on top of that, ba uh adult one was the sports court. Two was the lighting, three was kind of uh included some additional plantings and landscaping and things like that as priority things. Argus was not a of a bidder on the first project, um the first bid. They did not bid on it. Um one of the other, the highest bidder did not bid the second time, the other the other two did. Um so it kind of worked out well. So we ended up um getting a little bit lower on the sport court uh with the Argus bid, which was the adult. As well as the overall uh base bid dropped a little bit. So we we had to do some redesign costs in order to make the base bid work. Because when you take out the sport courts, that was going to have some drainage. So we did have to redesign if it were to just be awarded as a base bid. Uh but we also added in with the courts, which brings us back to the sort of the original drainage design. Because the way the courts were, the drainage was basically flowing off of it and then into that centerpiece, if you remember. Um that separated the pickleball courts with the tennis as sort of a V kind of drainage system. That had to be reworked if we weren't going to do the courts. So there was some engineering design that was sort of redone, but um. The way that came in, you know, we're gonna be uh in a position where we'll be able to make uh both of those work with the base bid as well as the um. The sport court adult. It was favorable um to do that. And the lighting is about where they came in from everybody the first time. I'm thinking the lighting is, you know, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. And that hasn't dropped. That hasn't changed. So.
And we don't have to go down the weeds on this right now, but just remember, there is that whole other bench conversation that needs to happen. You know, at some point.
So, yeah, they just shared some um literally uh just the end of last week, they just shared some redesign concepts. That is as far as the location and the pad, everything is all set on the on the design and the base bid, that would be part of it. We just need to um work out a um a design concept that fits the park. And we're working, working with uh those folks right now.
Beautiful, thank you.
I think that's that's all I had, um unless there was any other questions. I think I covered. Um this, just as a note, I'd shared with the board, um Carrie McVay was hired as our new uh regional health agent. She started uh yesterday. I think she's gonna be a great addition to the team. She comes to us from the town of Norwood. Uh but also in a regional position there, um working across eight uh communities and what they call NC eight. Uh which was a Norwood Collaborative Eight. Um so she's uh she's doing doing great, jumping right in. Um and the team has been supportive of uh getting her, getting her settled in. So.
Great. Please let her know the board welcomes her. Um she will meet her in the near future. Uh anyone have anything else for our town manager? Before I turn the meeting over to Selectman Anderson? I see nothing. Uh Selectman Anderson, floor's yours, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair. Motion to adjourn, please.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I had a motion to adjourn by Selectman Anderson, a second by Selectwoman Rouse. We'll do a roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Selectwoman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rose, yes.
Gallow, yes. Motion passes four zero. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation tonight. Thank you, Kevin, and everybody else. I have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.